Good afternoon. It is August 7th and we will be discussing the superintendent search with Ray's and Associates. We will be discussing many topics today. Before we do begin any topics for further discussion, so we're in full transparency with Ray's and Associates, it's important that today we probably need to have a consensus that we're eventually going to vote on. If we are going to appoint our current superintendent as the next superintendent, we need to be transparent for anyone that may be thinking about applying, that they know that we are truly interested in what we think someone knew. And we also need to, in all fairness, be fair to Dr. Mayer. So she knows where she stands with this board, so she is looking out what is best for her and her career. That also helps Ray's and Associates with their timeline and what we're deciding to do. So if I can get a consensus with the board on if we will keep Dr. Mayer as a superintendent for the next appointed superintendent.
The community spoke that they're ready for an appointed superintendent and they were very clear that we need someone from the outside. I mean, that's why we hired a search team to do this. It's time to really go for someone who's their expertise is on this school district, that has a history of success, a track record. And our teachers and our principals need to know exactly what's ahead of them. And I think it's very, very important, and I consider this an emergency item only because we're discussing it, and if we don't go ahead and vote on it, I'm afraid the phone calls, the anxiety, the first couple of weeks of school, if we wait until another school board member instead of determining that this is an emergency item, that the first two weeks of school need to be spent student-focused, and that's what we voted was our agenda, being focused on the students, not focused on some type of issue like this. And the teachers, it just is an issue that needs to be put to bed. The rumor mill gets out of control sometimes. And my feeling is that we definitely need to have this vote and make it clear to this community that they've given us the opportunity, they voted two to one for the appointed superintendent. That shows me a desperate, desperate cry for a new direction, a new change. And I would like to put this on as an emergency item if at all possible.
Eric, did you hear the question that is being posed? Eric? He's no longer there. Well, he's gone. Do you think it would be best if we called him? I think so, too. Can we take a brief recess and then call Mr. Cummings so we're all on the same page?
He may not have good cellphone in there if he's inside a convention place or something.
Yes, I'm here now.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so we are back from our recess and now we have Mr. Cummings online with us. And Ms. Stacey just finished her comment. Mr. Cummings, did you have anything that you would like to add to the question that is posed to the board?
No.
What about the, did you hear the question about us reaching a consensus if, as far as keeping Dr. Mayer as an appointed superintendent?
The question I heard was that instead of us going through the process, basically we would not be going through the process and we would just go there and appoint Dr. Mayer as the superintendent. I think that that would be a disservice to the community, to the voters that voted to, for us to go through this process. So I think Dr. Mayer should be given the opportunity to apply for the position of go through the process of being the appointed superintendent, but I don't think you should just go ahead and appoint her.
Okay. Ms. McCall?
Well, if she wants to apply and go through the process, you know, that would be her prerogative, but I personally would like to see a CEO that has experience, that can, knows how to build a very positive culture, that will kind of walk the halls and listen to the walls in their first year here, and that understands budgets, that's willing to work with the CFO. So I'm in consensus, I think. But I'm not sure that the community felt like we needed to go completely outside. I think that's, we look there. There may be internal candidates. I would not want them to not apply if they are qualified. I want us to do a thorough search. And that could mean internally and externally, but we owe it to this community to do our due diligence and to give them the best candidate and our students the best candidate.
Okay. Mr.?
I've been thinking about this as well. This morning I started thinking to myself, well, what are our intentions here? Because we've already paid Ray and Associates money. We pay them to come down and be with us today. So what are our intentions? And if our intention is to appoint our current superintendent, then why are we going through this process in the first place? You know, would be my question. And since we are moving to an appointed superintendent, that's something that we as a board now get to vote on. And we have to make that very clear to the community, what the process is, and...
Mr. Cummings, if you could put your phone on you, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So in terms of staying true to the process, we, the community said unequivocally that they wanted to move to appointed superintendent. So what is the most professional, business-like, keeping in mind the needs of our community, not any other community or other district? It's us, you know, what do we need? And I was grateful to have the opportunity to meet this morning as an individual, as we all did, to share our feelings and also our input. And it's my feeling that that's what the community wants. They want this to be a very honest, understandable, straightforward process. And finding quality superintendents, we're a little under the gun here because there's several counties and several districts in Florida that are going to be competing with us. And right now, as it stands, it's kind of a big confusing mess. No one being very clear on the way forward. And I think that the sooner we provide that clarity, you know, the better. We need to be organized and we need to be spending our money wisely, and we don't want to hamstring ourselves by our own process. You know, we've hired a company with 40 years of experience. Why would we do all that if we're already sure of the way we want to proceed? And I agree that this gray area can't continue. It's only fair to Dr. Mayer. She's worked very, very hard. I think everyone, I believe that, that she's definitely been very visible, has worked very hard. There's things personally that I'm very grateful for, you know, being supportive of restoring therapeutic horseback riding at Hillcrest School was a big one for me. The implementation of the statute for humane education, which goes directly into how you treat animals, is how you treat people with our safety concerns. Our career and technical education has caught fire, so that's in an awesome way. So there's been a lot of good things. And it becomes then very important to take that direction and that vision further, you know, what is our next step? And we have to come to a decision. I agree with that. And it ends up, it sounds like what you're asking for, Chairman, is putting it on an agenda and having us vote on it. Is that correct? What are we actually intending to do?
Okay, well, this is what we, what are we intending to do? Because if we invite Ray's and Associates to come here and search for an appointed superintendent, then whoever is applying for that position needs to understand that we have intent of, you know, of an appointed superintendent. If we're not going to have a different superintendent other than what we have now, then why would we, you know, not be transparent now and let future candidates know that, you know, that we're serious, we're truly looking? Because, you know, maybe the best and most qualified, if they don't think we're serious about hiring a new superintendent, why would they even apply? You know, if it's...
Especially with Sunshine laws being what they are in Florida.
Right.
You know, why would they leave a position that they already, you know, that they're comfortable in or even think about leaving and not knowing where we stand?
Right. And we need to be solid on where we stand. I mean, either we have done, you know, listened to what the voters, how they voted, you know, in 20, just last year in November, and we listened to it and we moved forward, or we decide not to and we also, you know, partize with them and not waste our taxpayer dollars. So today is a decision, you know, that does need to be made. We do need to have a consensus, one way or the other, whichever way we're heading, and we need to be transparent so we can move forward with this process and/or be, also be transparent with Dr. Mayer, too, so she can do what's best for her career. I mean, there's...
Do we need to vote on this, or can we just come to consensus that this is the direction we're moving?
Well, today, this is just a consensus.
I understand, but do we truly need a vote on this?
For someone to come in and truly believe that we are going to appoint a superintendent, we will need to vote on this and let people that are thinking...
We are going to appoint a superintendent.
That we're not planning on moving the elected superintendent forward.
Correct. That's what...
Our intent, let's just be clear. We need to have the courage and stop taking the path of least resistance, trying to make everybody happy. Here's what we need to do. We need to make it clear on the record, a vote, we're the five people that will be charged with making this decision. What is our intent as we move into this process? My intent is not to keep doing what we've been doing. My intent is to hire someone that will take us in a new direction, that's qualified, that has a track record of success, that can work with our teachers, a CEO, a true CEO. I don't even really care if it's an educator, because we have deputies. I want a leader. And my intent is to bring someone in right now from the outside. If we have an internal person, I don't know of anyone internally that has all of those things that I'm looking for. This school board member has no intention of voting for the status quo to continue doing what we've done when we had a two to one vote with our constituents, that they want change. So I am willing to say today, I have no intention of, there is, you know, concerns in the community about, you know, what are y'all thinking, what are y'all doing, who, you know, you're going to hire Dr. Mayer. My intent is not to bring any, not to vote for Dr. Mayer. My intent is to vote for someone with CEO experience, and she does not have that. And we need, the community needs to know what we're looking for.
Absolutely. And I don't disagree with that. I just didn't know that it was, that we needed to vote on it.
We need to stop pussyfooting around.
I'm saying we need to come to consensus, but if we want to vote on it, and I don't disagree, I want a, I want somebody who has CEO experience or has shown that they have the leadership qualities that we're looking for and the communication qualities that we're looking for and the community relations qualities that we're looking for.
Exactly. And so, right now, I have no intention of voting for the status quo that we've got now. And I am looking for someone new to come in here with the qualifications, because to be an elected superintendent, there were no qualifications, except, I don't even think you had to have a high school diploma by state statute.
You just had to be able to vote in Florida.
I think you had to be...
You had to be 18.
I think that it has, we have, it has, the time has come that we no longer have the threat of having a tractor driver as our superintendent of schools. We now have an appointed superintendent option.
We all understand that.
Okay. So I want to choose our superintendent with the criteria that we have established in our many meetings that we've had, and Dr. Mayer does not fit that criteria.
I don't disagree with that.
Nancy.
And if this is the direction that we're going to go, then once again, we need to be true to the process. You know, we can't have one foot in one arena and one foot in the other. That's just bad business. So if we're going to do this, then, and that's what the voters said that they want, then we need to honor that with integrity.
So we have a consensus, then, that...
Mr. Cummings?
Mr. Cummings, can, are you still there? Can you unmute your phone?
We do have a consensus.
We have a...
We're going forward with the process, correct?
Well, we're gonna, we have decided, there is consensus on the board. I'm still unsure about you, because the board, this current board that is sitting here today has a consensus that we will not appoint Dr. Heidi Mayer as the next superintendent and that we will be moving forward with Ray's and Associates.
Okay. That's correct. That's correct. Your consensus with me.
Okay, so we have a unanimous consensus. Okay, thank you.
Ms. King?
Yes?
I'd like to talk to the attorney, because we've done some, you know, I know in the past, to put an emergency item on the agenda can be done by school board's decision, if the school board members believe it is an urgent item. I believe this is an urgent item.
Emergencies are usually reserved for health, safety, and welfare purposes, though, and those are usually defined as, is harm going to result if you do not act on the date that you're trying to act?
Yes, I do believe harm will result. I do believe...
We're 14 months, no, we're over 14 months. We're over a year away from her ending of her elected term. I think you'd be hard-pressed if someone sued to establish we had to act on the 13th rather than the 27th. That's my opinion, but I think if we got challenged, you would be setting yourself up to lose that argument.
So, well, what does the statute say?
Reasonable notice, but, and the public has to have an opportunity to speak on any agenda item, and that includes, that takes into account the advertising.
I'm talking about what's...
Ace's law has supported seven days. We don't have seven days for this.
So what does the statute say on proclaiming an emergency?
Health, safety, and welfare purposes.
I would say August 27th.
That would be, it's the firmest footing, and it's for something controversial as going from elected to appointed, you want to put yourself on the firmest footing possible. I don't think you're harmed, given the unanimous nature of this vote here today. Everybody can listen to this and hear the discussion that took place and say the board is unanimous that they want a new superintendent. And if you want to take a vote, I would recommend you put it on the 27th. It's up to you.
I think it's okay. I mean, we have a consensus today. This board seems very solid on their commitment to a new, you know, superintendent. We've hired Ray's and Associates to come and do just that, and I think the 27th would just be best so that way we're transparent and do everything, you know...
If anybody wants to come out, they know the 27th is the day they can come out and voice their opinion to the board, and it's completely up and up.
Okay, that's fine. And this is a new process for everyone, so we want to be deliberate. We want to make sure that there's the opportunity for the community to absorb and understand our process, our timeline, that it's more than above board legally, all of those considerations,
And we just need to have the courage to be the leaders that this community has chosen us to be and stand strong. Courage is considered by some to be the number one virtue. Gratitude is right up there with it. And so, as we move forward, I believe this community has elected very courageous school board members. We work together to have our motto, that's our motto, and we speak about everything student-first. For the students of Marion County, we finally have an opportunity to not move a superintendent forward that's popular but is qualified. And I'm looking forward to us meeting the qualifications that we've laid out, that we're looking for in our interview process, and that there is no intent right now to name anyone as a superintendent and that Dr. Heidi Mayer is, does not actually meet the qualifications that we have set out in our... our plan for the superintendent. And so, we said that the community is clear that this, that we, we have, we've not discussed any intention at all to bring Heidi Mayer back as this, as the elect, as the appointed superintendent. And that's, we need to move forward and let the public know that we are going with their two-to-one vote for a major change at the helm of our school system.
Any more discussion about this topic?
I, I tend to think forward about things, and I'm already thinking about the transition, because legally, Dr. Mayer is in office until November. And we had discussed months ago, when Dr. Mayer had proposed possibly departing July one, that that would be much better for our district and for our community. It also gets us ahead in terms of the search. And so, everything takes twists and turns, and I'm sure this is no different. And I want to be confident that the, the commitment to the, to the kids, to our kids, is going to override anything else when it comes to the transition of this position, because there's things that only a superintendent knows when they've been in the job. And when a new superintendent comes in, you know, I do believe that President Obama and President Trump actually had a conversation, so if the two of them can do it, then I would think that anyone could, in terms of sharing information and, and helping with whoever our new selection is, get as acclimated as quickly as possible. That's only what's best for, for the kids, and I would think would be, what would be best for Dr. Mayer too, going forward. You know, this is her reputation. It's, it's obviously been her life for the last couple of years, to try to do the best that, that she knew how. And so, so those are, those are my thoughts, thinking forward. And I'll be looking forward to doing everything I can to be helpful in that in any way possible. This district is the side of Rhode Island. It's not like anyone has to even be in the same room all the time, but it would be wonderful to have that new person begin to at least become acclimated in, in some way. And it's not a shadow superintendent, you know, like I said, one person can be on one side of the county, and one person can be on the other. I don't know if there would be a way to put someone on retainer to help.
Well, I think that's why, um, Raisin Associates...
Right, and there's more to talk about.
...are, you know, we have a unanimous vote. They know what we're looking for, and I think you guys have some suggestions for timelines and, and stuff like that. So, I think this would probably be a good introductory for you guys to come before us and ask...
But I did want to make that clear, because that's been out there, this whole idea of a shadow superintendent. That's not what I'm talking about here. We're talking about an actually, you know, a professional and organized...
Learning our district.
Transition, right.
Yes. Okay, so, Mr.?
There's a floor?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. So, we passed out a topics of discussion.
Can you hear? Okay, is that it?
I don't know, I'm just curious if it's gonna pick up on what's going on here.
There is a mic right there.
Oh, I, I'm sorry, I couldn't see.
Okay.
So, everybody have that topics of discussion sheet? Okay, great. So, the first one, and some of these are gonna be really quick, yes or no. Some of them are gonna be a more of a discussion. But our first one is to discuss the procedures for reimbursement of candidate travel expenses by the district. Who would that, or who would be handling that?
Um, that would be Teresa Boston Ellis.
Teresa?
Boston Ellis.
You're gonna have to spell that one.
Just send it through my office. I think we're gonna be vetting the bills and then forwarding to Ms. Elena to handle the payment process. If you just send it to me, then I'll take care of it.
Okay. Done. Onto number two. So, what Sandy is handing out right now is a look of three different timelines that we have established. There's a timeline A, that gets the whole process done on the week of eleven eighteen. Timeline B, where the process goes through to the week of twelve sixteen. And then we also, and, you know, per the discussion that just happened right now, gave you option C, which would be ending the week of six twenty-two of two thousand twenty. Obviously, you know, time is of the essence. You did note that there are other searches going on in the state of Florida, but there's also searches going around the country. So, the sooner that we could get this done, obviously the better, as far as the candidate pool is concerned, and probably for the district. So, nothing is set in stone here. If there is something on this timeline that you, as a board, already have planned, retreats, or something like that, this is fluid.
Let's start with a first start for discussion purposes.
So, yeah. So, any discussion about this, these three timelines that we've put in front of you today?
Give us some moment to look at it.
Yeah, that's fine. We know we got one date right, today, eight-seven.
Today, yes.
You, um, your organization has the experience of bringing people in. When is the best recruitment time for, like historically, that you see?
So, the best recruitment time is, there's two seasons, one before the holiday season, and then after the holiday season. Timeline A and B is probably going to be your best bet, as far as that's concerned. It gets into a lot of state organizations, state conferences, and whatnot, that we will be attending and talking to possible candidates about.
So, you mentioned A and B were, are the best?
Yes, ma'am.
And to get moving with this?
Yes. I'll let you know, I have personally talked with individuals in the state of Florida about this job, who are excited that we got the, the bid, and, and possibly interested in applying. But I've also talked with individuals outside of the state of Florida who are interested as well.
Option A looks like the shortest turnaround time, looking at that.
Well, when I look at this, I, because we're not in a rush, I think November's quick, I like option B, just because a month, I mean, I don't know if a month makes...
Option B kind of gets us through Thanksgiving and...
Yep.
Just, and, and it's not as such a quick turnaround. It gives us time, and we're not in a hurry at this moment. I prefer B.
Believe me, people sit around at the holidays, and they start thinking. And so, yes, you are correct in that.
I don't know if anyone...
I like option B.
So, is this ti, the time to bring up, what would we do with, if we find somebody and our current superintendent stays through November? I mean...
One of you two ladies, more.
Or is this not the time to discuss that?
That's also why we brought option C forward, because if you look at that with the idea that possibly you would select someone by next June twenty-twenty, then with the idea that that person may come on as a consultant from June or July one until the time that the superintendent served its term, that would be another option, that they could possibly do some of their, you know, look and listen and learn, and learn about the district during that time, like at a consultant rate. So, that's why we put option three base C based on new information that we received.
But they really wouldn't be a consultant, they would be an incoming superintendent, correct?
Transitioning in.
Yes, a transition superintendent.
Right, but statutorily, you can only have one superintendent at a time. So, and if she was making the choice to stay through November, she would be the superintendent, and you could bring somebody in.
Well, we have other things. I mean, I've, I've looked into it. Other districts have inspector generals, they have auditors, and they have different things that do not, they don't have the role of the superintendent. They have a role of just kind of informing the board about new things and the state of, the state of things. And we'd have to look and see exactly what that, you know, what that would be, a consultant. I mean, we can call the person, whatever we want to call the person, because we know, my, here's my concern. The elected superintendent will be dealing, the budget that we will be putting, moving forward, starting the budget process, the staffing plan, and that sort of thing that starts up, we get, we get involved in that by February. We're starting to move forward with that. The elected superintendent will have those employees from basically August the twelfth, if, if we start school then, August the twelfth, until basically the end of October, okay? Very short amount of time. The new superintendent that comes in will have that staff and, and everything, and had no input in it whatsoever, from November until the end of the school year. And so, I don't know, I don't know that June is necessarily the date, unless that worked out well for the superintendent that's coming in. I mean, it might be, March might be a better time to bring them in, to just kind of work with the school board and help us, you know, we will be getting recommendations from the superintendent, but the school board has the right to have an inspector general or an auditor to also, you know, make recommendations in the direction that he sees for different, like staff member, or whatever. Tell us, tell us, I mean, what have you ever, what do, how do other districts handle this when someone's coming in? I'm sure this isn't the first time you've ever seen this happen.
Consultant rate, usually.
Okay.
They come in on a daily rate.
Wait a moment. Mr. Cummings, can you please put your phone on mute? Thank you, okay.
As a consultant?
Yeah, but I, you know, ideally, I think our hopes after hearing that you had, in consensus, said that Dr. Mayer is not your choice moving forward, would that perhaps you guys might go back into negotiations in terms of when her last date be? You know, ideally, that would be our first option, was that she did not finish out her term. I know you have no control over that, but that would be the first thing. But number two, you would have to, because it's gonna be difficult, starting any new superintendent job is very difficult. When you have two people in the same district, it's very awkward. And it's very awkward for the staff, you know, who reports to who, who's really in charge.
They would be reporting to this person, this person would be...
Yeah, I mean...
Making his way around and, and seeing, you know, meeting our principals and...
True.
And just coming in, because it's no secret that he's coming. I know, even in business, they will, someone's retiring out, someone comes in, you know, and they, they work in the area, they kind of learn the job, they learn the community, they learn the business community, so that they have a full understanding. And that takes some months to do. That's not just an overnight thing.
And they could also develop relationships within our school, but also our community.
Uh-huh.
I mean, we have business communities. I mean, there's more than them just, if they did come in, in say, June or November, they're hitting the, you know, round running. If we invited the, and it, and it, even if there is somebody, but say they came in December, it gives them time to get to know our community. Not that they're gonna come in and run our schools, 'cause they're not, but it get, they get to know.
It would be through a full budget process and get to know Ms. Boston Ellis, and how, and how, you know, just...
Build relationships.
So, you all are the experts in this, and what, what has worked best in other communities where this, I, I mean, understanding going from elected to appointed is different. But what has, what has worked best? What has been the timeframe that a consultant who is going to be the superintendent has come in to began to understand the school system, to begin to learn the community? What is your recommendation on that?
One thing I was gonna add back to the consultant, and this would be something you could work, have your attorney draw up for you. In statute, it lists the duties of the elected superintendent. I would suggest, if you're gonna have a consultant come in, you draw up and make it very clear who's in charge of what. You've got to have crystal clear expectations, down to who answers to who, who doesn't, and what's required, what is required by statute, and what isn't.
Exactly. Who's hiring and firing, who, you know, all of that, that kind of input. A seamless transition, right.
That would remain the superintendent, as far as hiring and firing.
I would agree.
Well, that's where you work with your, I would suggest you probably could have a board workshop just on that. How do you want the transition to happen? You know, you're gonna have to decide things down to even, where's the office space?
Right.
Who's going to be the person supporting this? How is this going to be?
Right, right.
And so, I think you could draw up a very li, very clear list of this falls here, this falls here, this falls to the board.
It would basically be a job description for the incoming person. I got a little tripped up over consultant, because that, you know, I don't know.
That's why I think...
I wish, I, I'd like to come up with a different title than that.
Well, but I think that will help not, I'm not gonna, this isn't grammatically coming out right. I'm a former math teacher, what can I say? Grammar's not my thing. But this will make it clear to the candidates, because if they know they're coming into a situation where the sitting superintendent is still gonna be there for a while, their first question is gonna be, how's this gonna work?
Right, exactly.
And to be perfectly honest, there may be candidates that don't want that situation.
Right.
Uh, but we've never ran into a situation where a consultant, or a superintendent coming in as a consultant for maybe a month, but we've never had a situation where it was this long.
Yeah, this has been a...
That's the difference.
Sort of a unique situation.
This is a unicorn.
Typically, it's pretty clear on the transition, and how long that period is gonna be, and it's never gonna, it has not been in the past for us.
No.
Months and months. And it was not a problem in terms of who's really in charge. So, this has been a...
Now, well, the new superintendent, the appointed superintendent, historically, do they bring in their own deputies? Do they usually work with what we've got? I mean, I don't, I have no clue.
It works always.
Yep.
It works always. Sometimes they will keep the same staff that they have. Typically, they would bring in one, one person or two people.
Okay.
That they've worked with in the past. Yeah. But we've, we've seen all kinds of combinations.
Right. Because with all of the, the years that I was in the schools, whenever a superintendent changed, there was a big upheaval, big flurry of activity, you know, changes everywhere.
And it's God's where we are today.
Opponents being farmed out to some rural elementary school, you know, in retaliation. It's, surely, we can do better.
Yeah, not always. I mean, there are superintendents that we've helped place that have made no changes at all.
Right.
And typically, we caution them about making massive changes.
That's correct.
I can say that in our county, I believe our employees have stood the test of time. They've worked with many different, you know, superintendents. They've kind of stood the test of time. They've worked in loyal fashion, most of them with, as the tides turn, because they knew it was an elected position, and that this guy sitting at this desk next year might be the elected superintendent in four years, you know. So, I don't believe that we have, I believe we have some really good employees that have done the job for a long time. And that's what I'd like the appointed superintendent to come in and see ahead of time. I'd like for him to come in and see our, our great principals, and teachers, and our great PR people, and, and get a good, comfortable feeling, so that when he does start, he'll know then, after observing maybe for three months, where is the weakness here? Where's the weak link here, that I need to, to, to maybe stand up? Because watching and asking questions and, and interviewing people...
That usually happens the first year that they're on board, not before they come in. You, you won't, with really good CEOs, you're not gonna see a lot of big changes that first year. They're gonna come in, they're gonna watch, they're gonna do a lot of listening, and then they'll begin to make changes after that. And I think that's what we want, is somebody that's really gonna listen and understand what our system is, what's really good about it, where does it need to be tweaked, and where does it need to totally be changed. And so, that's why it really takes a good CEO nine months to a year to really do that listening and understand where the changes need to be.
Okay, but here's the difference between a good CEO... Okay, but here's the difference between a good CEO of a bank or something and a good CEO of a school system. We have, this is the largest employer, there's not another CEO that has ever had a job in this county this big, this is big, with this many employees.
And that's why it should take a year to really get to know it.
It will, but I also think it's gonna take a little time, a couple of months ahead of time, just to walk the streets, to visit the churches, to visit the different groups, just, just to make his, his face known here. So that that's done.
How about this suggestion? Tell me what you guys think. How about, because, you know, we never did before present to Dr. Mayor that there is a unanimous vote that she will not be the next appointed superintendent. I wonder if we should, like you said, negotiate with her again, make sure that she truly is staying till November. If she is deciding to stay till November, even though she understands she will not be the next, maybe we should make June the goal, because if someone is a CEO, that, I don't see them wanting to come in in December.
They're not.
And, and that. And so, if we did hire him in June, then they could come in and that transition can take place, should Dr. Mayor, you know, decide to stay till November. If she decides to leave in June now that she knows this information, and, and all fairness to her, so she can think about her career, move forward, after she gives us a definite answer, and we'll give her a timeline, then we choose the December one, maybe, or March, something like that.
Does that work?
Yes.
That makes sense?
Same thing.
Yes, yep.
Okay, so, why don't we just start from there? I know what she said, and then that way, we're all on the same page and
The option C won't be cast in stone, based on what the other decisions are.
Right, until the other decision.
Give you more flexibility.
Yeah, so.
Hello?
Yes.
Hello? Hey, I'm, I'm listening to, to the discussion, and I'm agreeing that in, in anything that we do, we need to make sure that we're doing it decently and order, and in a just manner so that the public knows that we are, as Ms. Thoreau said, being transparent in the whole process. I agree that we do need a period to get that new person in, whether that new person may be, so that they can get a lay of the land. And I'm, I'm kind of, I'm, I'm kind of leaning to where Kelly was saying, we don't know how Dr. Mayor's gonna respond after this, she may decide to leave, but right now, we, we have the plan that she's going to be there until November 2020. But I think that new person does need to come in blind, or blindsided, they need to be able to have the opportunity of the few months, at least going into the new school year. Our, our initial intention was to have that person in place by next August. And with Dr. Mayor saying that she's saying to be there till 2020, then we need to go ahead and try and get that person in place and have them as a trans, I guess, a transition consultant, or whatever, however, whatever title you guys are coming up with, that's what we need to do, we need to give that person an opportunity. And then should, again, should Dr. Mayor say, okay, the writing's on the wall, they're not gonna, I'm not even gonna be considered, then she may, she may choose to do something differently, and, and still have an option where we could buy her out and get that person in. So we, we definitely need, I guess, an option of, that type of option.
Because right now, it is all conjecture until we get our response from Dr. Mayor, and, and one thing we really don't have is the luxury of time, because the state is on us. We already have two schools being under external operation, and that's expensive. So, we, what, what I, none of us want to see is it to have a new superintendent come in and then have a dip, because we've been dipping for a very long time and now are having some forward progress, so we certainly want the incoming superintendent to have as much opportunity as possible, like Ms. Stacy was saying, to, to, and all of us have been saying, to learn the community, learn the district, learn the people, learn the culture, and take off running, you know?
And then also, the second thing, I think, is that we have to do whatever is possible to create the least of minor anxiety within the county with this process.
Because we are the best.
We have been at a high level of anxiety for the past, since the election, so we have to, the things, the decisions that we make, we have to do it to ease the anxiety amongst the parents, amongst the staff as well, and all of the constituents of the county, so we have a big responsibility.
We do. And I think, and Eric, I think you're right, but
Come back and revisit.
That's why I think a gradual time here, where there's, you know, there could be cottage meetings and home meetings and stuff, with the incoming superintendent, he could attend churches, he could attend
Yeah.
Things, and he, that takes time. If he's on the job November 1st, when's he gonna do all that? He's gonna be the man making decisions. He needs to build his bridges and his relationships and hear the hearts of this community, and that's gonna take a few months. It's not gonna, and then, when November 1st comes and he's on the job, running the school district and making all the decisions, everyone will already know him, that will take, this anxiety you're talking about, will just take that all away, so that when school starts August the 12th next year, they've already had a good month, two months to meet, greet, visit, just chat with and get to know the person that will be the CEO of the largest business in Marion County.
And I disagree that they need to come in early, but I think we need to define early, because I think it will be very stressful if we have somebody here, even in a consultant role, more than one or two months while there is a sitting superintendent. And I just think that will put a lot of stress that doesn't need to happen.
Is that, is that something, is that something that timeframe, that, that, 'cause it sounds like we're, we're kind of, we're kind of up in arms about the timeframe, that person coming in? Is that something that we can hash out in a work session?
I'll, I'll just, I'll say this, it's, for us, as far as transitioning occurs, we see that it, this is not like a months and months thing. This is like, I'm here for a week, and then I'm taking over. So, I mean, am I?
You're right.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
It, it's not something that's months and months and months.
But, do they usually come in November? And that's my concern, 'cause November's the middle of a year, and we're talking education. So, usually, it's the summer, I would think, when usually they pass the baton and kind of, and that's where this is different, 'cause if, again, if you're in education, depending whoever this person may be, are they gonna wanna come in November as opposed to June? And we also know there's like four or five other
A, a, a big help with this will be if, how clearly defined our expectations are for this incoming person, and, and what their expectations are going to be, what they're not going to be, so that they are operating within a framework. And again, Marion County is, is huge, so, you know, in tinier counties, you literally might have your office next door to the super, the sitting superintendent, you know, that there's, there's ways to set this up to make it be successful, keeping in mind that this is education, and for the continuity of our district, having someone sooner than later is important, so they're in on the ground floor of, of budget and, and all of those things. But we, we're probably not gonna get all that, and we're gonna have to condense it down to a shorter amount of time, but you truly are hearing our, our concerns about this needing to be a, a planned transition and an organized transition and
Right now.
Clear. And to start the job in, in November, when the school year's already on, to me, just causes total anxiety.
It just has someone die, you know, in the real world.
I mean, at least like when, you know.
Can we compromise on starting, getting the person in place to start, like, be in place by day one of the next school term? Would that be a better compromise, than starting them in May or June?
We have to find out with Dr. Mayor.
Right.
Right, you know, it
So that's three months.
Right.
Would we be able to get somebody that would leave their current job to come sit in a consultant role for three months before they take over?
I think there's, this district has so many issues.
And they certainly wouldn't be sitting.
They would not be sitting.
But they would not be the superintendent.
But you know what?
Correct.
That's better than starting in November and have total chaos.
That's like a gift, really, if I was coming in.
If you approach it from the standpoint that you are newly appointed superintendent effective November 2020, and you're gonna get a chance to do your look and listening and your tour throughout the schools, the communities.
I think they would do diligence, have conversations.
If you present it that way, that could be presented as a real gift.
Because his job, because his job probably is gonna end in June or wherever he's at, or whatever, or May, whatever the season is, he wouldn't wanna be unemployed until November, I mean, that could keep us from getting someone. Right, and that is overlap on salary for, for us, but for something like this, in a $600 million budget, you know.
We need to overlap.
It's a, it's a fraction, right, and it's a best practice, it's a best practice, so.
Well, how much is failure costing us?
Well, it, my point, you know.
It's costing us $2.5 million to have these schools like this, okay?
Yes, I'm not disagreeing.
Okay, we're all on the same page.
A quick question from our team, is there an anticipated date that maybe we can get an answer from Ms. Mayor?
No, 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 no.
Okay.
Well, that, no, well, then we, as a board, need to decide what we're gonna do, because we, she presented us with the contract last January, and we didn't hear till July, so we
Well, it's our intention then to, are we talking three months? Are we talking one month? Let me, let me throw another thing at us. What if she finds a job and she leaves in May, or June, or April, and we're sitting here not having anybody scheduled to be here till November? We need to have some, hm?
That's why I agree with you, that, that person, we need to have that person know who that person is gonna be, just on, before, before the beginning of the next school term, we need to kind of know that person and have identified who that person is, just in case Dr. Mayor does find another position.
And you know, and, and I hope for her that she does find a great position, and we would be so supportive and happy for her, but on the other hand, we have to think about 43,000 students are gonna be sitting here with no superintendent until November, because that's what we decided today we were gonna do. I think that we definitely need to look at the June month, at a point in June month to bring someone in, and that way, they, you know, maybe June 15th or whatever, so then when contracts start Ju, July 1st, he sees the new staff, he meets the new staff and who's lined up, and moves forward, and, you know, and as far as anxiety, everyone's adults here, and I'm, and my desire, strong desire is that we're recruiting someone who's very adult-like and will not cause chaos, and will make a smooth transition and work tirelessly to work with Dr. Mayor, and, if she's still here. But goodness, I mean, I hope for her, she's found the placement, and she's found a, a great new job, and she's moved on, but we need to have someone in place in the summer.
So, so what, so what I'm hearing is you like this, you would like to go with the December timeframe, that you would like to, a part of the agreement would be that this person would come in, in a consulting role at the beginning of the school year? Is that what?
I'm talking, no, I'm talking, the beginning, July 1.
Well, that's
When you say school year, I think August.
I'm thinking our fiscal year.
I was like, I didn't hear that at all, I'm like, what did I miss?
No option B.
So, am I hearing that we're comfortable with, you're thinking May?
I was thinking
Named, she said.
Oh, so what about the June 22nd date? And that puts some, like, the third week in?
No, I say, I say option B, and we have them lined up and ready to take, I don't wanna still be in, doing interviews June the 22nd, because then they haven't had time to make their plans.
It's a long time, that's 11 months.
Right.
Before the superintendent.
Option B.
No, 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 what I'm saying is, have the person decided on by, by December, so that they have a job.
Can we go back to original, that if she chooses, after hearing our discussion and our consensus, to, to leave June 30th, would be her final day of 2020, then we could take option B. If she chooses not to, I agree with Ray and Associates, I think we need to look at option C.
Yeah, that's what, I, I agree.
Believe that she goes in June, and we took option B, when would they come to work? Is it gonna like March?
No, I'm talking if she decides to stay till November.
And she might, let's give her, and, and out of courtesy, let's give her the opportunity, but let's give her a deadline, 'cause we can't have what happened this past year.
Right, that's my point, you know.
And that's, and we went full circle.
Yeah.
It's time for us to manage the timeline.
It is time for us.
Thank you.
It's time for us to pick up the reins and
Manage your timeline and ride the horse.
So, we have a, we are going to vote on this on August 27th, and then we could have the timeline, so how about we ask for, hold on, I'm trying to pull up my calendar.
I need some help with the timeline talk, when you get that squared away, I, I have a couple of questions.
All right, so
So two weeks should be plenty of time.
So by the
10th of September?
Well, but we can present it to her tomorrow, we have a board meeting tomorrow, and we could know actually
By the 27th.
By the 27th, and then we kind of have it all ironed out.
Yeah. Okay, all right, let me ask you something about this. Y'all are saying option B, well, that ends, in the, in the December, so you're saying they wouldn't come to work then until June, but this other one goes through June, I don't understand.
Well, they wouldn't become the superintendent till November then, but they might come
Yeah, but if we don't do the interviews until June the 22nd, they have, they're gonna take time to move, they can't, they're not gonna just hop on a bus the next day and come.
Clarify, option B was when we originally thought that there was gonna probably be a January start date
Right.
For that new superintendent. So that had the interviews finishing in December, with the idea of them starting in January, you wouldn't have much overlap.
That's what I'm talking, if she
Option C is your current superintendent filling out, completing the entire term.
Right.
Does that make sense?
Just a question for me, just, I think they're struggling, or at least Ms. Stacy is like, they, if this is out of state, let's assume we're getting some from out of state, how long have you seen it, that they typically need to move their families and everything here? So I mean, if you're June, she's, she's envisioning
That's what my problem is.
We're finally deciding in June, or toward the end of June, almost July, if they're from out of state and it takes them two months to get their family here, they're not even gonna be in town until
Typically, typically, what happens is that the superintendent will come in and take temporary housing, particularly if they have kids that may be in high school or whatever, want the kid to finish out the high school, but typically, they take temporary housing, they don't move their families right away.
Okay, can we adjust option C, if we need to?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
And say that the interviews would be like April, and that gives them a chance to get their stuff moving and come in first of June or something, because they're not gonna, we're not gonna interview them and then have them move in the next day.
And be in a consulting role starting July 1.
Right, that's what I was thinking.
July 1, is that for you?
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm in agreement, I'm thinking that you, July 1 date to start for a consultant.
But if they don't, if we don't do interviews until the week of 6/22, they ain't gonna get here by July 1.
Mm, mm, but then also, whatever, whatever, let me say this real quickly.
And give them a chance.
You know, I, I wanna emphasize that
Go ahead, Eric.
Okay, whatever, we need to be clear on what the roles of that consultant would be, so that there is not a crisscross of duties or responsibilities, and there's no intermingling between the, their responsibilities with the current superintendent and the incoming superintendent, so that there will not be any friction created by us having a consultant there, that's going to be the superintendent.
Right, and Eric, I think that's why we hired a company with 40 years' experience to help us do just that.
Right, okay.
Well, trust
I think we're trying to make these decisions with a lot of uncertainties around.
Really there are.
And that, that, I want to assure you that as, as the situations change, we can make modifications to adapt to the situation. But right now, we're operating with a lot of
We are, a lot of would ifs.
Unknowns.
Whoever the unknown person is, I mean, they may not be able to come until September, and I, and I don't know really how they are gonna feel, I'm kind of interested to see even who would apply, thinking or knowing that they would have a consultant job for four or five months, because when you're in that type of leadership, you might not, I don't know, it's just
No, but I think, like Sandy said, if you catch it No, but I think, like Sandy said, if you couch it so that they are, that's when they are visiting schools and really.
Just learning the community.
Learning, and, and learning the community, and attending the CEP meetings, and.
Getting to know the stakeholders.
You know, I think we could, I think we could structure it so that it would be a comfortable role for them.
And I'm going to share with you, when we're talking about consultant pay, I'm talking superintendent pay. I'm not talking a thousand dollars a day or whatever. No, I'm talking, no, I'm talking superintendent pay.
Yeah.
Let's, let's, Dr. Mayor make her decision, and we'll go from there.
I'll give her to August, I'll, we'll present it tomorrow, and then the deadline of August 22nd, and then we'll vote the 27th. And then we'll have a clear direction.
Great.
And just to make sure that I'm hearing all this accurately, it's our desire to have someone in place by July 1. Right?
Right.
Regardless of any of the rest of it.
Right, right.
If she decides to leave in June, then we'll look at the December, or, you know, we'll play with those days.
Look at maybe a couple, you know, maybe a month coming early to get to know, because they'll have the summer to finish getting established, where right now, we just can't wait until November and be in the middle of district football championships and this and that, and all these different directions, and having, we're having a superintendent sitting there going, I don't even know what team's playing who.
Right.
All right. They need to know that, right? Basketball, mom, let's move forward.
So, number three is going to be relatively easy here. So would the board like to receive all meeting materials via email or flash drive to save our paper and copies? That needs to be changed. It's really per one meeting. So it's the meeting that we come back and say, this is what the online survey results are, and this is what we heard from the community. That meeting, we can do all digitally, without paper, if that's okay.
We're fine with that.
If you go back to two, you didn't answer question, part two of number two.
Oh, yes. So any meetings the board would like to conduct via Skype or conference call to reduce expenses?
We decided, like, probably with, depending how many there are, maybe the first six to 10 candidates, like the initial, we're fine doing Skype, if that makes sense.
Are you talking meetings with?
Meetings with us.
Oh, meetings with you guys. I'm fine. We've met, I feel comfortable.
Okay.
Can we do Skype, Mr. Christian?
Yes.
We thought we met the candidate.
I mean, specifically for that meeting that we can do digital, we suggest we can do it Skype for that meeting. But for the other meetings, you're probably going to want us here.
Okay. Yes, there's nothing like the face-to-face.
Yes. Yep. And Ms. King, if you were talking, did I hear correctly, like, the first round of interviews, you said something about maybe possibly doing that Skype?
Until we get to the finalists, maybe, the final three or whatever?
How do you normally?
Yeah.
I would highly suggest that you don't do that.
Okay.
What you just said, the face-to-face, the body, the interaction, exactly. And so you're going to want to do those face-to-face.
Okay, that's.
The average you have is, is the Florida sunshine laws. A lot of candidates, our good candidates, are in jobs, and they don't, as soon as they make a finalist where you're going to be talking to them, their name gets out there, and a lot of them won't apply if they don't, they don't mind their name being out there if they're in the top three or something, but if they know they're only in the top 10, they're like, I don't want to take a chance of upsetting my current board, and they'll back out.
Okay.
So.
How many, how many candidates are usually interviewed?
So we're going to bring probably 10, 10 to 12. And at that point, you'll narrow it down to maybe around six or five. And that'll be your first round, and then after you do that first round of interviews, you'll narrow it down to the final two or three.
Now, this isn't going to hurt their jobs, though, to come here, because it'll be.
Yeah.
Well, they're, they're going to make a risk assessment at every level, so.
Right.
There'll be some who don't want to do the group of eight to 12, or some who don't want to do the six. But once you get down to pass that six, they're pretty much committed at that point.
Correct.
Because it's gotten out.
Yeah, Florida's, you know, there are some candidates that just won't apply to Florida because of our sunshine laws.
That is.
That's hampering, sadly.
Yeah.
Okay. So, number two, we wrapped up, and number three, we got determined. So, number four, determine the input process, who will be involved? So what I really am asking here is, are, is there going to be a committee that's going to be sitting in with you, or is it going to just be the board members that are going to vote? My understanding is it's going to be the board members and no committee. All right, that is the most, that's the easiest way to do it.
No one gets left out.
Correct.
Right.
And then the next thing is, who is going to be in the constituent meetings? So, we don't have to decide that today, but I think you need to go ahead amongst yourselves and make a list of who you think needs to be involved. So, the players that are always there, central office staff, principals, teachers, business community leaders, faith-based groups, all of those.
Legislators.
Legislators, and please include the children in that.
Maybe the retired teachers group or something.
Retired teachers group, that's fine as well. But, and some of them, you can merge together. So you can merge the business leaders and the faith-based group.
Chamber of Commerce.
Chamber of Commerce, that kind of stuff. So, we can send you a sample of what we've done with other districts. Okay.
So how long will you be here to do this?
Uh, two days.
So you start like 9:00, you do, you, 9:00 to 10:30, you do it, and then to look.
What we would do is, in the morning, we always do a, a open forum, all right? So anybody and everybody from the community can come to this open forum. And then from there, maybe that's from, you know, 7:00 in the morning to 8:00 o'clock at night, or sorry, 7:00 to 8:00 in the morning. That'd be a big forum. So, but from there, we could go into meeting with the teachers, then the next hour, meeting with the principals, et cetera. We can be in multiple locations.
With simultaneous meetings.
Right, so we can be in northeast, southwest, because of our team here. And then we also have a open forum in the evening as well, to get those people.
We are a very large county, as you know, and so we want to make sure that everybody has access and opportunity. And I didn't hear transportation specifically mentioned, but again, our, our buses drive what we do here, because so many kids ride the bus, and also our unions. I guess, you know, you, you mentioned teachers, and, but not every teacher is part of the union, and, and teachers, paraprofessionals, you know, clerical, everyone needs.
I would say everyone's included, not just the union members, everyone's included.
Yes, but my, but the union, we work with the union, so we would want them to also be aware and be invited. We don't want to leave anybody out.
And also remember that the online survey is going to be available. So everybody can take that online survey, and actually, there's a blank space at the end of the survey where anybody can write anything they want for you to see and read. That's important. It's also important that you to know that we don't edit any of that information, so you're going to get it.
Can I say something?
Yes.
Can I say something? I think, I think the online survey may be a little bit better for a lot of our staff that are in the district, because you don't want people to feel like, in, in a political system, you know, people feel like if I'm not with you, then when that new person comes on, I got to be a part of the team, or I'm going to be ostracized. In this process, by being an appointed, that takes away that stigma, but still, there are going to be some people that may feel like they would be retaliated, as they felt they were able to say certain things. So by doing the online piece, where they're able to do it anonymously, that helps. That helps people be more real. That helps people be more truthful in the process, I think.
You can reassure people, those come to our offices, they don't come up here to district, you know, we're not going to be tracking.
How is it, the survey sent out? Is it through the district, or is it through Raisin Association?
So your website, posted on website?
Posted on your website. You can send out robo-calls about it. You can send out flyers with children. You can have your newspaper write something. But, you know, the deal is, you click on a link, and it goes to Survey Monkey. And then Survey Monkey, you take it, and you can identify who you are. I'm a parent, I'm a teacher, I, I am a other, I'm a community member, et cetera, so.
But it comes directly to you.
Comes directly to us.
That's good, that's good.
Okay, okay.
And as, as Ryan said, when they, they can write anything they want, we don't edit it. Actually, when we meet with people, we'll give you physical copies of what they said, so that they feel that, that every, the message is being communicated.
Yep.
We also would ask you to be mindful of where these meetings will be in hell, so there's a convenient location for the people in the community.
Again, we could be northeast, southwest, so.
Is it typical to hold them at schools?
Yeah, you could do, we've had cafeterias, you know.
Church.
Community centers.
Community centers.
What about, what about churches, what about churches?
Churches, we've, we've done churches.
We've done pretty much everything.
Anything that makes it convenient for the, the members, the constituent members.
Okay.
And as we said, we bring a team so that we can hold simultaneous meetings. Sandy is in one location, I'm in another location.
So we'll need to identify the locations and then the groups that we want to ball.
And that's.
You had a list, I.
Yes, and we'll, we'll provide that. Would you want all that information, or sorry, information to go to Ms. Martinez Lopez?
Probably Mr. Gibbs.
Mr. Gibbs, okay.
Terry Brown. Well, and you guys all need to look at what days would be best. I mean, you need to look at your calendar and pick what, you know.
So we need to do this pretty soon, though, once.
Yeah, we'll do that after August 27th. Right now, we can't come up with any dates.
Yes, yes, I agree.
Something to look at, as you're looking at, you know, looking ahead, is finding a couple of days that will be generally good across the county for us to come in and gather information.
And as Mr. Cummins brought up, what we, we normally do is we ask, we suggest that the board members not attend the meetings.
Yes.
So that people feel comfortable in.
That the board members what?
Do not attend.
Do not attend the meetings.
And, and a lot of our folks work, too, so for them to take time off during meetings.
Evening session as well.
Morning, lunchtime.
Right, right.
And the evening sessions, what, we call those our y'all come meetings.
That's right.
So, we will get that information over to Ms. Brown, correct? Okay. So, number five, who will be the consultants in-house contact person, that is Ms. Brown? But who will be our board contact? I'm looking at you, Ms. King.
Yeah, I was like, I'm, I'm the chair.
Okay.
Ms. King, yes.
Okay, so, all, all communications will, from Ray and Associates, will directly go through you, okay?
Now, now, let me ask a question. With it going through Kelly, through Ms. King, she has to send it back to the attorney, and he has to disseminate it to us, correct, for her side?
Terry's, Terry's going to get.
Well, usually, that's how we do it in-house. We would, they would just send it to me, and I would just blast it out to everybody, but it's fine if they want to go, if they have a question that Ms. King needs to answer, it's fine if they just contact them, and she can kind of guide them.
I think so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Discuss the procedures for developing the promotional flyer and job. We will create a promotional flyer for you. I can give you some examples.
Thank you.
Palm Beach, Lake Town, and some others.
So we can create this flyer for you, or if you have a rock star department that can create one, and you want to go with them, then so be it. But it's part of our service, it doesn't cost anymore. But we would want some stock photos from the district that we could utilize.
Okay, that, for the photos, would probably go through Mr. Christian, Kevin Christian, and.
Probably have Ray and Associates create it, because Kevin's staff is very.
Yeah, I was like, these are already, and these are, these look great, so.
Okay.
We created.
So what we're going to do is, we're going to create it, and then at that meeting, when we come back with all the survey results, you're going to approve it at that meeting.
Okay.
Okay. So if there's little changes here and there, well, I want this and not that, it can be handled very quickly.
Okay, thank you. Kevin, do you have anything, questions or anything we need to add to that?
I have more pictures than you could ever imagine.
Wonderful.
He has a full file after every board meeting.
You know, I'm, I'm sitting here, and I'm looking at the Juno School District in Alaska, and when they're talking about their district, that it's the fifth-largest district with 4,800 public school students. Now, a consultant may have a hard time not tripping over a sitting superintendent in, in that situation, and, and that's not the situation that we're in. So it is very interesting, the difference between districts.
The average size school district, there's over 14,000 school districts across the country, and the average size is 3,000 students.
Seriously.
It's because of Florida's municipalities.
Right.
Yeah.
And boroughs.
And boroughs, that's right.
They put mountains in the background.
Mm-hmm. We need horses in ours.
Yeah.
Big oak trees and pretty stuff.
You want passes to Kelly?
The next thing that I handed out is the approval of the online application. There's nothing fancy about this. This is the same application that we use for Seattle, Detroit, you know, state superintendent searches for commissioners of education. It is what it is. So, Mr. Gibbs, if you want to go ahead and take a look at it, it's pretty straightforward.
Hey, guys.
Yes, sir.
I have to get off the phone. I, I will be there in the morning, Ms. King, and other board members, I'll be there in the morning for that work session. I'll be trying to get back in tonight, because I'll be leaving out shortly tomorrow. But I think you guys are going to make the right decisions in my absence, so I'll, I'll one vote. And I think the biggest decision's already been made for today, so I'll please the skills for the rest of this meeting.
Okay, thank you. Travel safe and see you tomorrow.
Thank you, sir.
All right, see you guys in the morning, thank you.
Thank you.
Are you all comfortable with the online application?
It's the one you always use, huh?
Yeah, so, many lawyers have looked it over, so.
Don't make it difficult, Paul.
Right.
Never give an attorney anything.
I know.
To legalize it, to legalese.
Getting his fine tooth comb out.
Advertising. Yeah, okay. So, I'm kidding. So the next thing that we'll go ahead and look at.
How do we get the word out, advertising?
All right, so, we're not here to spend your money. We're not going to tell you, you have to advertise here and here and here. There's a lot of free places that we can advertise to. I'm just going to kind of walk you through where those places are.
Comes in a pair.
So there's a, again, an option A and an option B, and it really is all about that first one. So if you look at option A, recommendations by us, AASA Job Bulletin and website, that's an absolute must. You have to do that. Every, every search that we ever do does that, and it's where you're going to get your biggest bang for your buck. Option B, or option A, you can see the advertisement is 30 days. Option B, you can see it's 60 days. So that's the only difference between option A and option B. So I would definitely recommend AASA and Education Week. Those are your two, those are the holy grail, as far as where superintendents go to find out about new jobs. NAPSE, which is the National Alliance of Black School Educators, 250 bucks for 30 days. I think it's worth it.
We need to do that.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. ALIS, which is the one below it, it's 150, that's the Latino administrators, for 150 bucks, I would do it. Education America Network, I don't see a lot of bang for your buck there, so I would avoid that. Executives-only website, it's free, as long as we have a salary required, all right? So we'll have to put the salary in there. So, Ray and Associates, you can see that, that's our website. The National Association of School Superintendents website's free. I say hit all the free ones, okay? Why not? So.
He's good.
Florida School Bullies.
Yeah.
Did you mention School Leadership 2.0, the one for 149?
Yeah, I don't see any bang for your buck there.
Okay.
I've never gotten a candidate from there. Now, you need to look at the last three. The FSBA, the district to post, and the Florida Association of School Ministers, Administrators, district to post, as well as the school business officials. We can post it for you, but they're going to charge us, which would come right back to you. you anyway as an expense. So if you can go ahead and find somebody that can do those posts, that would save some time and money.
Okay.
Okay. The other additional options down below, you can do them if you want. Again, I don't see any bang for your buck there, as far as getting candidates. Again, AASA, EdWeek, NAPSE, and ALIS, which everybody has been nodding their head, those are the ones that you need to do.
Biggest decision's 30 versus 60.
Right, right.
Do you find, between the 30 and 60 days, like, is it?
Do we get?
Do you know what I'm trying to say?
Well, yeah, so you're already spending 400. I'd spend an extra 150, and I would do the 60 day.
Go ahead and do the 60, okay, that's what I want. People usually bite after 30, I mean, I guess it depends who's looking.
Right, and we're not doing an emergency search right now.
Right. So what I'm hearing is option B for 60 days, and then we'll hit EdWeek, NAPSE, and ALIS, and all the free.
So let me ask you this. Do we end the budget, Mr. Gibbs, we need to budget for this superintendent search?
Our school board budget is usually inflated, I don't know if it still is.
They did do the 45 that they gave us to budget, so that is in our budget.
Okay, but what about things like this, when the candidates come, we have to do?
I don't remember how, did you guys give, it was like 40 for you, and then you budgeted five extra for the reimbursements, right?
I'm sorry?
Your bid was 40, and then you guys built in the 5,000 for reimbursements, if I remember correctly. Was that how it was?
I believe.
Yeah, so there was some reimbursements built into their original budget.
I'll get what Teresa said to you to make sure.
And yeah, she, the budget is over her, and then we verify all the bills.
In the past, our school board budget was inflated. I don't know now that we have secretaries and stuff, I don't know if it still is, but they used to put, that's where they had some fat in our budget. You don't think it is anymore?
Pretty thin.
I got after them about it, I said that's their.
So Elena, would you just check to see in the current upcoming year budget, what is allotted for school board expenses outside of our normal expenses, to see if there's some wiggle room? So, you know, with the advertising, and then there may be other expenses that, are there, what other expenses would come up during this search? What other expenses other than advertising?
You're going to have expenses of them coming in.
Candidate reimbursements.
Candidate reimbursements.
So that's not the 5,000?
I think there was some built in for reimbursements. I don't know if all of it was gonna be covered or not. I think it was.
Yeah, so Ray and Associates' estimated expense total is 6,000. With the flight of, flights 3,000, 1,000, 1,200 for hotels, 300 for meals, and that's for us.
Yeah, that's not for the candidate.
That's not for the candidates, the candidates are a total different option.
Okay.
So if they have to fly in, we're responsible for that plane ticket and everything, correct?
That is correct.
So we need to probably budget, be sure that we've got about 6,000 to 7,500 in the budget for candidate. Maybe 10?
I'd just budget for 20.
20?
Because if they're gonna give us 10 candidates, I'm, you know.
In our proposal, it says the actual number of candidates interviewed is the board's decision. The estimate per candidate for interview expenses is around 2,000. However, it is dependent on the candidate's geographic location. So if they're coming from Knoxville, Tennessee, it's gonna be a lot cheaper flight than from Seattle.
Right.
And the eight to 12 is a paper review. We're not bringing those people. Once you reduce it, then we're talking about.
We're talking about five or six people.
Yeah.
Okay.
So if we budget 20,000, and we should, that should be, that should be more than enough?
Yeah, it is.
Okay.
And what about for internal candidates? How does that typically work? Is there a link that goes on our school website, or?
Internal candidates are treated exactly the same as every other candidate. So if you have somebody that applies from within, they have to go through the whole process.
They fill out the online application, just like everybody else.
Right, I guess my question is, would we put a link to the online application on our school website and just?
Yes, yeah, for everybody.
Right, and say that we're hiring, okay.
Front page.
Wanted to be clear.
Yeah, and once we, once we start the process, everything flows to us, so when you, when you get the calls about my cousin's brother, you tell them that apply online, just like everybody else.
Yep. And the last thing that we have on our topics of discussion, yay, we got there, last one. So there's two things that we handed out to you. We did a regional superintendent salary comparison for like districts in your size.
Okay.
And then we also did a national as well. I will tell you, Molly, our vice president of operations, this is her favorite part of her job. She loves it. She's a numbers person, and she called me and she was frustrated. She goes, I've never actually ran into a problem in where I'm looking for an enrollment size, and I can't get them to where everybody else is. Your salary is so severely low that it was very.
Not their fault.
What's that?
Not their fault.
No, not your fault. But it was very difficult to get an enrollment size, you know, like yours. Your regional superintendent salary comparison with these two, Georgia and Alabama and Florida, you can see the enrollment size there and the average, their base salary for a superintendent in 2018 and 19 versus what they're going to be making in 2019, 20 school year, it's 183,000. Right now, you are at?
137,800. I'd be curious what Lake County is, they have the exact same enrollment, we've got just about.
I don't know, I mean, we can find that out for you. But when you look on a national scale, and this is important, because you're doing a national search. The same, the same, it actually goes up higher. It's averaged 260,000 for people like yourself in enrollment size. So that's your, in a lot of ways, that's your competition.
But if that's in San Francisco, that's different, because the cost of living is certainly something to keep in mind.
Florida caps what superintendent salaries can be at 225,000, what you can use FEFP money for.
I, when I sent out my email with the comparable in states, Lake was at 195.
Lake was 195? You beat me, thanks.
I put that together like earlier in the month, so I already sent out, it was easy to get to.
Yeah, but cheap, cheap place to live, because I'm from that state, Kansas City, Mo.
197 for Sarah Seven.
And it has a district enrollment size of 16,000, and they're at 270.
And Volusia is at 175. That was for their outgoing. When we talked to their office, they said they're expecting that to rise with the new incoming.
So should we?
Well, I'm not, you know.
Now, I'll say this, we don't have to make a decision today. All right, so I want you to go ahead and be a sponge and absorb this information, but on the day that we come back and present information to you about the online survey, and this is what we heard in your community, that's the day that we're going to need a number. And when I say we need a number, we need one number. Okay? In 40 years, we don't, we've never done a range, in the range of 175,000 to 200,000, because you know what everybody else is gonna want, 200,000. So what we do is, when we put it in the wording of, you know, you seek a superintendent, and the salary is in the range of one number. And the reason why we do that is, if they're a rock star, okay, and you really want them, you can go up a little of that number. Now, if it's an assistant superintendent, their first superintendency, you can maybe go down a little, but you have to be prepared to, you know, pay that number. And I would say going up and down in the range of like 5,000 max, and 5,000 less. So we need one number.
You know, I don't, I mean, this is my opinion, as far as whether it's 50,000 more, averaged out over this huge budget, and to get someone that can save us, we don't have failing schools that are costing us $2.5 million. The school superintendent's salary, I mean, if you get results, you don't have, you take away all those extra reading enrichment, whatever it is we do to bring them up, you know, you're not having all that. That's all so expensive.
External operators.
Yeah, and so the quality of the superintendent.
Getting ready to say something.
Okay, all right, we are back from recess, and Mr. Ray, can we further our discussion about salary?
Certainly. What I was, what I was going to say, and what our team has been talking about, is you want the salary to be good enough that you don't become a training ground. You don't want somebody coming in and using you for two years, and then jumping to somewhere else where they can get paid more money. At least get the salary high enough where they're gonna come in and grow roots into the community.
I do, too.
That's an.
We want someone that's done this before.
Yeah.
You know, it's the old term, penny wise, pound foolish, you know. Talking about pay for performance, I think I've read that with other superintendents' contracts, that they get a bonus depending on performance, and there's other negotiables like cars and all kinds of things.
Yeah, I mean, it happens. I would say that superintendents would rather have, you know, this, and they don't have to like, deal with all of that, but.
Typically, that's outside of the, once you agree on the salary.
On top of the salary.
And the board might decide, well, let's put out some performance incentives.
Correct.
That if you, if you reach this, we'll pay an additional bonus, but typically, that's outside of, once you decide it on the salary.
Okay, so that being.
Sometimes it has a trickle-down effect to staff, because then what the superintendent does, I, coming from a district that did that, what I've seen happen is it gets handed out to staff, and they get told this happens or else.
Oh.
So you want to be real careful of that.
That's what used to happen with United Way here. Principals were, you better beat your number from last year, and it became such a not fun thing for them.
So just word of caution.
And if you guys really do want a experienced superintendent, you're going to have to go ahead and, you know, pay them like they're experienced.
I want someone experienced. We don't need to have any more on-the-job training. Our district's been through too much, and we promised our people that we would bring someone in here that's, can do the jobs, done the job.
That doesn't mean that a very good deputy superintendent cannot do the job, and I don't want to limit us.
I'm just telling you what.
And I understand.
If you look at it in terms of the experience of the job, you could have a deputy superintendent who has more responsibility.
Maybe in a bigger district.
In terms of students' responsibility than the district's, so you would be looking at those kind of people.
Yeah, you're gonna be getting an educator for sure, then.
Well, I'm not, I'm saying, I'm just saying, I don't want to limit us, and I'm, I'm all for looking outside of the education ring. I've been for that since we started this process.
Because a deputy superintendent can always be your, you're a big person that's in education, you know, and your CEO is your, I mean, the hospital administrator is not a nurse, or, you know, I mean, you bring someone in that can manage the money.
Some of them have been nurses and come up.
That can manage the money.
CNOs.
But it's not a requirement, and.
I'm looking for some. We just want the total package, can you deliver that to us, please?
Yes.
Yep, I can do that.
We're so hungry for, we're, and we've got, there's just so much work to be done here, that someone's gonna have to really roll their sleeves up here. It's gonna be somebody that likes a challenge.
I would suggest to you that you marinate on this a little bit, and, you know, start thinking of a number that is comfortable with you, and then we talk.
Okay, so the next meeting, you suggest that we kind of marinate and?
Yep, yep.
And it's important for the public to know that, you know, right now at 137,800, we're more than $45,000 below the average, and when you look at what it costs to pay external operators and remedial programs and all of that, while it's going to sound like a lot of money to typical Joe public, when you look at the offset, it's really, again, penny wise, pound foolish to not make sure that we're offering a very competitive salary.
Yeah, I mean, if, if I compare you to another district, there are districts in the state of Iowa that have about 5,000, 7,000 kids, and their superintendent's making about 225.
And they got the top.
A lot less responsibility, a lot more money, and so.
Smaller's better.
Local control.
But like I said, we can talk about this at the next meeting.
Because they're so hard.
Sorry, can you please repeat that?
Well, like I said, we can talk about this and get a final number at the next meeting.
Okay.
So.
All right.
We are done.
Well, thank you so much. We appreciate you taking time to come and talk to us individually today, speak to us as a group. I think we've done a great job today, at least we know where we intend to go, and we'll have some dates finalized here real soon.
And keep us posted.
And we sure will.
Thank you.